All that poppy.
The line. You know what they give you in replacement tonight when I raised hell about it? Saplings about that tall.
A what?
Saplings about that tall.
Oh, really?
Little starter trees about that tall. I'll never go through that again.
Okay, folks, can we get started here? Susan has another meeting to attend. Next for this meeting of October 6th, 2014. And what would please your call?
Mayor Jane.
Here.
Kathy. Bill.
Yes.
Ralph.
Here.
And Jill and Neil were absent.
Everyone's had a time to look at the defense. I need a motion to accept the motion, set it up immediately, please.
So, ma'am.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Jane.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Need a motion to approve the warrants and payroll timesheets, please.
So, ma'am.
I'll second them.
Roll call, please.
Ralph.
Yes.
Bill. Mayor Jane.
Here.
Kathy.
Yes.
Need a motion to approve the transfer of police revenue to the federal fund, the police fund, please.
So, ma'am.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ralph.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Mayor Jane.
Yes.
Need a motion to approve the police fund monthly operating fund transfer, please.
I move that transfer to be made. Sorry, Kathy.
Roll call, please.
Ralph.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Mayor Jane.
Yes.
I need approval to approve, to move the interest transfer, please.
So, ma'am.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Bill.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Mayor Jane.
Here.
Ralph.
Yes.
All right, Susan, I'll go.
Thank you very much. I gave, you probably already heard, I gave Mayor Jane, she'd asked about cleaning out Shane's Ditch and Rocky Ford trees, so I did find some information about it. It's due hopefully by July of this, next year. It does do string restoration and those type of things. Sixty percent grant, forty percent match. The match can be cash or in kind services if there's things that you can do or equipment that you can provide or volunteer labor from anybody, you can use that as your match. So, I did bring that. If you want to take a look at it, you can. If you want any more information on it, or you want, you know, you want to try to pursue it, or want to put some numbers, other cost numbers, you can let me know and we can move on with it.
Do you know of anyone that could give me estimates on the cost?
Yeah, I can do that.
Oh, okay.
It's not a problem. I just didn't know, I didn't, you know, I didn't know how serious, I wanted to bring it and let you know that it was out there and see if you were interested or not.
Yeah.
And if you are, then, you know, we can probably throw some rough numbers at it, you know, just, you know, like a ballpark number, so you know what part you're thinking if you want.
Yeah.
This, is this year? So, it's just a guideline, right? Every one of us do it in July of 14?
Yes, it's just a guideline.
So, it's, but it should be about the same?
Yeah, they don't really change that per year.
Well, it'd be, it has to be in by July of next year?
Okay. And it's a one, one year.
Okay.
That's how it works. So...
Through EPA, right?
Yes, it is. It is. The other thing I have is I have the engineering agreement this evening for the West Cherry Street reconstruction Phase One project. As you remember, you received a $200,000 grant in July from the Public Works Commission. We're willing to share on that in $700,000. Engineering agreement in front of you is for $40,600, and that goes in the application itself. It provides for all the design work, all the bidding, and then all the construction, observation, and administration of all the paperwork that is related to this construction, as I've always done in the past. So, I need you to make a motion to accept the agreement, and then that way, where PM signed it, and then we'll be having someone down here come to do the fieldwork probably within the next couple of weeks. I'd like to be in a position to bid it by the end of the year, possibly, you know, probably January-ish, January, February, that'll get us our best numbers, because everybody's trying to line work up for next summer. I will probably do an alternate bid or two in it, so that if the bid would come in under budget, we can try to avoid it upfront. The reason for that is because of how Public Works Commission is getting pickier about change orders, and I don't want to get in a position where we do a change order and we send them the payment over there, and then they start asking questions, and they say, "Oh, sorry, but we won't pay for that because of what the original scope is." So, they're getting, relating that, let the bay with, with kind of the director of Public Works Commission is getting a little pickier about how things are, to ones things more lack of money. So, basically, what I've been doing, and I did the same thing for Harrison Township, I've reminded you, that we did out earlier this past spring, is we just picked some alternate type work, and we bid it when we did our original bid, and then we just added whatever we needed to, to build the new facility. So, most likely, probably, we could look at the end of West Cherry Street, because we're not really getting, the scope doesn't bring us all the way down to the end, it only brings us to Jefferson Street on the curbin sidewalk. And the storm sewer will go all the way from Washington down to this manhole over here. So, all the storm drainage will be done, but only part of the curbin sidewalk. So, we might want to look at doing the rest of the curbin sidewalk as an alternate bid, and then that way, you know, one, it's competitively bid, two, you can add it in there if we have the money to do so. If there's something else you'd rather do, or some additional things you'd rather do as alternates, we can also do that, so you can even be thinking about it. Just because we do alternatives and we have one, two, three, four, doesn't mean we have to do them in the order of one, two, three, four. It might be that we can do three and two, because it meets our budget. So, I'll keep that in mind as we go through here, and, you know, within the next two months, I'll be kind of coming back to you and saying, you know, "Okay, alternate, why? What do you think?" And so, kind of, you know, put that in your agenda if you're going, and you think about that.
Thank you, Susan. So, I need a motion to enter to the agreement with lots of associates to represent us in this matter on the reconstruction Phase One of West Cherry.
I'll make a motion that we enter the agreement with the Moden, what is it?
Lot of Association.
Lot of Association.
Lot of Association, Association. Sir, second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Bill.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Mayor Jane.
Yes.
Yes.
We need to sign, to, those copies.
Oh, no, no, no.
Oh, I thought I could, I'm sorry. Oh, I think that's the, I think that, that's the one that...
Yeah, that was my copy.
...we print out, yeah. I'm working here, you know. Very much so. And the only other thing I wanted to mention is, we did submit the nature works park grant on August 29th, and we didn't really come up with some demo bid, just simply because it was going to be a lot more money than what we had grant funds to facilitate. So, we ended up working, putting the application in for a shelter, and some picnic table, and some playground equipment. So, that's kind of what the application was submitted for. It's kind of open-ended and a little generic, so you can kind of pick and choose, maybe there wasn't any particular amount of tables, or kind of playground equipment, it was kind of generic. The shelter was a 20 by 40. If you want to deviate from that, but we can. So, that's kind of what we ended up submitting, just because the demolition, there just wasn't going to be enough money.
Sure.
Actively do, make it, make it a complete project.
And when did they make the decision on that?
Um, they will probably decide something by the end of the year, we might guess. So, I still have a question. You'll probably go for it.
All right.
Okay.
Susan, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Anything else, let me know.
No, and you feel free to leave. I know you have another meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
My daughter's, yeah, but this is, doing the van, they got all the, great help there. Shane's Ditch.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, wow. They include that. My daughter cheats there, and she's good. And it's, it's a big affair. It's pretty difficult.
All right, with all of the committee reports, safety chief.
Quick department handle, ninety calls per service from September. We took nineteen reports, made four arrests, and issued eight citations, twelve warnings, and we impounded two vehicles. And the only thing I got to comment on is, we all had state qualifications last month. Everybody passed, so we're good for another year as far as the safety side, firearms. And also, we did, if you've seen our second body in the cruiser, we hit iron auxiliary, police officer, his name's Scott Hamilton, he actually lives in Hamilton. He's in training now, probably be there at least another month or so, and then, once he's done with his training, he'll probably be coming back to you for approval, although he's a part-time officer. Seems to be, well, he'll have to get through his training and all that, and we're short on people. Sergeant Schroder, he's, you know, he left us, Clay, I heard, we never really replaced either one of them. He's kind of hitting this on hours, so we're down a body, could use him pretty quickly, but we're gonna let him go for a while and make sure he's ready for, kind of, so.
Are either one of them, Jeremy or Clay, going in at times? They were for a while, and I just am asking if he's still...
I am requiring them to work an eight-hour shift a month, because we hold their certification work. They are doing that, so we're good on that. And also, we also have a flyer there on the, that explains that it's Jeremy's son, so just for the information there for you. That's all I want here.
Thank you, chief. And for everyone in the audience, Sergeant Schroder's son has a crippling disease, and I can't even begin to pronounce what it is. He's having a chili cook-off September 18th. So, fundraiser at 6:00 PM at Village Edge Lodge, and everyone's invited. And they'll have a raffle of live music and stuff for fundraiser to the awareness of whatever big name this is, it's, well, I can't begin to even pronounce it, someone else will love it, try it if they'd like, but it's a devastating disease. Sergeant Schroder has some things.
It affects his kidneys, and he has water all the way around.
Yeah, I, you know, it's, man, it's not good. Unfortunately, if I don't, I've been told by his parents, he's not more than four or five years old, if he makes it that far, so it's not good. Building. Neil's not here. I do know that he has contacted Smyers about putting garage doors up there at the bus barn. I also know that he got a bid on the metal, but I'm sorry, I don't know what it is, he's not here, so we'll have to discuss that another time. And I do know he got it done, but I don't know what the price of it was. So, Smyers gonna start, he's really busy right now, as soon as he gets time, he'll be, he's gonna go over and hook the doors up there, even ask if he could add a key to it on the weekend, which is not a process. Anybody else have anything? Streets. Joe, Neil, both not here, as far as I know. Everything's going along all right, there's a bubble, we gotta get Bill for when he gets here, and all he builds is, got a couple, I've come down that way today, there's a couple big ones up there. Ralph, I'm assuming he stopped something working out well.
Yes.
Streets there?
Yes, sir.
Lights? As far as I know, everything's working good, as of last night, if I just want to make a simple, thank you. Finance?
We are, you know, we have some things to resolve as far as our finances, but everything seems to be going along pretty well.
Sentitation, Mayor Jane?
As you can tell, mowing still hasn't been done along the railroad tracks and then a couple other places. I contacted Greenheart's Lawn Care and Nursery, and they said they would mow it, and that was before Apple Fest, I haven't showed up yet. I do have another guy in mind that, from New Madison, he works for the village in New Madison and does mowing on the side for himself. So, if they don't show up here shortly, I mean, everybody's been putting me off all summer. That, and way back when we had some trees taken down on Jefferson Street, Joyce Garrison's property, I had asked her about getting rid of her weeds, and she said, "Well, when are you ever gonna take the tree stumps down?" She cut the trees and never came back and did the tree stumps down. I don't know what the deal was on that, I don't remember, but Greg Stevens, I believe is the one that cut those trees down, she was under the understanding that he was going to come back and remove those, and it's starting to grow out again. And she said, "I'll take care of my weeds, you take care of my tree stump," so...
I don't remember the discussion on the trunk, so I know we had the tree cut down, because when we had the road repaid, it stayed wet right there, and part of the problem of staying wet there was because it's overshadowed from the sun, and it never ever dried out, which destroyed the road, so quite frankly, I don't remember, I know we took the tree, but I honestly don't remember the conversation about the stump, so we'll just have to check into that. I don't remember.
I don't either. And I don't know what the deal was, but she's wanting those, she said she's highly upset because she was under the understanding that it's gonna remove the tree stumps, but I don't know.
We'll have to look into that and ask somebody who's got a better memory, I guess, but I honestly don't recall exactly what it was.
Ten minutes or something.
It could very well be, that would have been, what, four?
I don't remember.
Four, about four years ago, probably. We paid Jefferson? Probably over now. Probably now, probably, that's what we're finding. Anyway, we'll look into it.
She's wanting, she wants that tree, I don't know if it's one or two.
Seems to me like we just took part of the tree, seems like it was a forked out tree, we took the part out over the road, the other part under the yard.
I don't know.
But we'll look at it. Okay, any else, Mayor Jane?
No, that's all.
Penny? Anything on Neil, what? BPA, Kevin? No? All right. We've got some resolutions here to take care of. First one is resolution number 2014-23, Village of New Parish requests for amendment to 2014 certification estimated resource budget. This is something we changed all the time from Jane nine to stay in compliance. So, I would need a motion to accept that, please. I'll make a motion to accept that resolution 2014-23?
Kathy.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Jane?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
I would need a motion to approve the three green rule, and it passes emergency, please.
So, ma'am.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Bill?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Mayor Jane?
Here.
Ralph?
Yes.
Next one is appropriation realignment, which is basically along the same lines as for her to keep in compliance with her line, resolution 2014-25, being resolved by the Council of New Parish, Purple County, Ohio. A resolution of approval to realign the permanent appropriations resolution by modifying the following appropriations from one account to another within the fund. I have the motion to accept, please.
I would like to say, just for the record, that we're realigning these things, and the estimated resources have been a little bit higher than we expected when we did the budget in January, and that's why we're doing this. And along with that, that little bit of money extra that we got, we've got to put it someplace of this, but it's, but it's needed. Yeah, exactly. We can't just let it sit there, we need it. I move that resolution 2014-25 approved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Bill?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Mayor Jane?
Yes.
I need a motion to approve the three green rule, and it passes emergency, please.
So, ma'am.
Roll call, please.
Ralph?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Mayor Jane?
Yes.
Next one is what we have to send back to the auditor for our upcoming levy in the ballot, and this will be resolution 2014-26. And this is the levy, the renewal that's coming due, which is like $7,000 or two different ones, right?
Well, this one is just accepting the amounts for 2015, is what this is. Yeah.
Resolution accepting amount and rates as determined by the Budget Commission in authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. Whereas the council, in accordance with the provision of law, has previously adopted a tax budget for the next succeeding fiscal year commencing January 1, 2015, and whereas the Budget Commission of Purple County, Ohio, has certified its actions thereof to this council together with an estimate by the county auditor of the rate of each tax necessary to be levied by this council, and what part thereof is without, and what part within the ten bill tax limitations therefore being resolved by the Council of Village of New Parish, Ohio, that the amount and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and its certification be and the same are hereby accepted and be in further resolved, that there be and is hereby levied on the tax dividend of the village, the rate of each tax necessary to be levied within, without the ten bill limitations as follows. I would need a motion to accept this, to go back to the auditor, please.
Motion made.
Second.
That's resolution 2014-26. Roll call, please.
Jill?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Mayor Jane?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
I would need a motion to approve the three green rule, and it passes emergency, please.
I move that we approve the three readings and pass it as an emergency resolution. Second.
Roll call, please.
Ralph?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Mayor Jane?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Old business? Anybody anything?
I don't know whether this comes under old business or not, but I'll bring it out. Now, I've been approached by several of the residents here in town about the, down into the library that, where we tore the building down, and they wanted to know if we were going to open that up, where that could be some public parking for the library, or what that was going to be used for, and if they were, could they put, could we put gravel or something in there to help that situation out?
Yeah, we've already determined that that was the library parking down there, and we put these grinds in down there, and we was, that was back in the fall, we waited for ourselves, some more to put some more in there. I guess probably it's our fault when we haven't done that, but yeah, that was, that's already been set aside for a while.
I had, I had told them that, but they didn't know whether that could be used as in?
Yes, it can be used as in, and we can haul, and we can haul some more down there, if there's more grinding needs put in there, we can get that done, so yeah, that's already been taken care of.
Okay.
I think it does need grinding, because the weeds are, was grown out.
Well, probably need sprayed, and more grinding's put down, and weeds are always going to come back after the grinding, and we don't spray, but I think we was waiting on it.
Roll or put the grinding, so...
Unfortunately, we don't have a way to roll it, unless we run a roller, but...
You don't have a lumpy parking lot.
Uh, new business, Village reviews, the new next meeting. Do have communication for me that I want to share with you, and after that, we're going to go into a short executive session for employee policy, please. If you recall, back in the spring, I told you that I had made a mistake, and I had Billy come down and put some coal patch in the alley behind the red front, which should use for my drive-through, and while he was there, I simply said, "You know, I would like to buy some coal patch, a couple hundred pounds of coal patch, and fill a couple of holes in my, in my lot," which I did, and for which I was, I paid for. There's about $35 of material, and I wrote a check to the village for $100. My fault, mistake of judgment, I shouldn't have done that, I already informed council that. So, but in the meantime, a concerned citizen here in town reported me to the sheriff department. So, there was an investigation from the sheriff department, he came down and talked to me about this coal patch, and I was being accused of theft, which did not occur, I paid for. So, the sheriff, I give my statement to the sheriff, he took it back to the prosecutor. The prosecutor seemed fit to send it to special prosecutor, attorney general's office. And so, I was investigated by special prosecutor and attorney general's office, and they were looking at a possible classical felony against me for that. So, I hired a lawyer, went in negotiation with, with the attorney general's office, and we come to an agreement on this, and I'm about to read the letter to the attorney general's office. This agreement entered to between Purple County Special Prosecutor Joel King and Mayor Rick Van Winkle pursuant to the special prosecutor authority under Ohio Revised Code Section 102.06G1. Summary, the Purple County Sheriff's Office and the Ohio Ethics Commission open investigation of potential ethics violations by Rick Van Winkle, mayor of New Parish, Ohio. Specifically, it was alleged, alleged that Mr. Van Winkle received public service and public property for his own personal use when New Parish employee Billy Killian delivered coal patch asphalt to Mr. Van Winkle's private business. Facts. Investigation revealed that on about April 19, 2014, Mr. Van Winkle received several hundred pounds of coal patch asphalt delivered by Billy Killian. The village of New Parish owned the coal patch, which is used in their road repair throughout New Parish. Furthermore, New Parish employee Bill Killian delivered the material during his working hours. Billy Killian only delivered the material after receiving Mr. Van Winkle's instructions, and the instructions was to do the alley. The other was a second thought after he was there for matter convenience for me. Bad mistake on my part took place, I've apologized for that. While it be determined, Mr. Van Winkle missed that the facts supporting the violation of Ohio Revised Code, Section 2921.42A, it is also determined that these matters should be addressed through the settlement authority pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 102-06G based upon the following factors of mitigation. Mitigation, Mr. Rick Van Winkle was corroborating the investigation, Mr. Van Winkle paved the coal patch several weeks after it was used, and the appropriate of Mr. Killian's services had been received. The coal patch mixed given to Mr. Van Winkle was excess, in other words, it was old coal patch that we wasn't going to use anymore. And that, in New Parish, it already used what material was needed, considered the remaining amount that was given to Mr. Van Winkle as waste. Resolution, per the terms of this settlement, Mr. Van Winkle acknowledges that his actions violate provision of Ohio Ethics Law and mean a prosecution. Mr. Van Winkle agrees to accept the public reprimand. Further, Mr. Van Winkle agrees to enter into this settlement agreement to resolve the investigation. A copy of this settlement agreement will be shared with the office of the Purple County Prosecutor, the legal counsel for the village of New Parish, and the Purple County Sheriff's Office. To be completed, three, three, 4.5 of full Ohio Ethics Training. Two of them is a webinar, and one of them is I have to attend, and they'll remember in person or elevator. One of them I have already completed, one of them will be done this week. Pursuant to the Revised Code, Section 102.06G3, Mr. Van Winkle reaches this settlement agreement, the special prosecutor in his discretion may rescind the agreement and risk to any investigation here on prosecution. Mr. Van Winkle hereby voluntary waive all statute of limitations regarding to this charges. Per the terms of this agreement, investigation parties will be closed to review of this So, that's what's took place. I've never taken anything to this village, nor will I. Quite frankly, I don't like to be accused of something I didn't do. I made a mistake, yes, I paid for it, I almost paid dearly for it. Some of the things I've done for this village that I don't talk about, it's just because I'm able to, and I do, and have done. Back when we had no money, I bought two sets of police car, police car tires, so the officers had tires under them. I put $1,100 for the guttering on this building down here at no charge. I spend several thousand dollars donating to the fireworks every year. Three times I paid for the levy sign, signs that goes up around the village, asks the village people to pass our levy so we can stay in busy, business. I paid for that out of my pocket. One year, we used my bobcat in all the alleys to spread the, uh, the chips in the holes and stuff. Uh, been approached today and there were some postings around town, some of the places in town, disagreement. This is being done by a local business person who has a personal agenda against me to make me look bad in the eyes of the village as far as I'm concerned. I apologize for making a mistake. I apologize to council. I apologize to the village. I want to thank Joel King for working with me to clear this matter up. And I want to thank council for what they do for this village. It's really easy to sit over there and condemn those people sit here for what they do. But all we're trying to do is the best we can do for this village to keep it afloat. They make fifteen dollars a month. I make sixty dollars a month. We are not at terms. We do the best we can do with what we got to work with. So I want to clear up any rumors out there. So be it. Without any emotion, just go into executive session, please.
I would like to read into the record that we appreciate the apology. We had all had that before and leaned the backs of everything prior to this finding coming out. Yeah, it's a mistake. And you know, it's easy to stand back and say, everybody ought to know better. But you know, you just do the best you can. Just have to be here, right?
Thank you. I need a motion to go into executive session for, uh, personnel politics.
Motion made.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ralph?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Mary Jane?
Yes.
Kevin, please stay. Thank you. Okay.
This might be yours. Yes, not that one. It's that one.
Oh, no. I need, I need a motion to go into executive session, please.
Motion made.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ralph?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Mary Jane? Yes.
Having said that, next meeting will be November third, seven p.m. I need a motion to adjourn, please.
Settlement.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.